Action on all the different items, say okay, go ahead and write an ordinance. Well, bill becomes a lot type thing, but I can follow up with the teacher too.
Joy, can I have you do roll call as Mr. Schnelly walks in?
Yeah.
There you go. Mar. Larry Mar.
Here.
Van Campin.
Here.
Bano.
Here.
Haldah.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
And then we have Meyer, Mozon, and Smith back excuse tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Unless you want to run.
No, no.
Apologize. Don't know why I did that. Okay, first item on the agenda after roll call is, I believe, approval in the minutes of, bear with me, November 7th, 2024, do we have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Motion?
Second.
If we have a second, Mr. Mars, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to public appearances, this, this is part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the plan commission, including both items on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, the agenda items allows the commission to receive information to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to this information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, places on future commission agenda. However, commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Not bad. So, if anybody here wants to talk about anything on, off the agenda, that's fine. We have individual here that can be here for the agenda. Anybody else who wants to say anything? You'll wait? All right, moving on then. Thank you very much, everyone. Move on to item 7A for discussion only. Update and summary of public input on outstanding zoning text amendments concerning concealed fasteners, accessory chicken keeping, and beekeeping.
And Greg, just a reminder, if we could still move item 7E.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Up a little bit, so we can address that.
Okay, will this item may take longer? Let's, I can move up E if you want to.
Yeah, I think E shouldn't take too long. Yeah. If you said that, we'll come right back to A.
All right, I, I, we'll go on to item 7E after this then, okay? I, yes.
After that.
Or you always do that. Timeout. What we're gonna do is we're gonna forego item A for this moment, and we're gonna move on to item 7E, which is review and possible approval of an SIP plan at 7, or 279 Peterson Trail. For wellhouse number six, the applicant is the village of Oregon.
Thank you. So, um.
That's right, I, that's right.
Yep, thanks, thanks Greg. So, back in our October meeting, you all approved a GDP zoning approval for the wellhouse out at the, in the Highlands of Netherwood neighborhood. That has now been out to bed and is on its way to getting under contract. There was some feedback at that October meeting for the, the site plan, the SIP that was coming down the road, on some of the facade treatment, garage door selection, and some landscaping. And Lauren provided an update on some of the DNR requirements of the outlet pipe and kind of screening that. So, there are updated plans and renderings that are on the following pages that I'll scroll through, but the SIP is still consistent with what was approved in October, the, for the GDP. And Lauren, I happen, happy to answer any questions, but I will maybe turn it over to her and just talk about some of the changes that have been made in the last two months.
First off, thanks so much for moving this one up. I really appreciate it. So you guys have seen this several times now, and so I'll try to keep it pretty brief. Just as a reminder, and for those that don't know, this wellhouse is going out into the Highlands of Netherwood neighborhood. It's on Peterson Trail. And this is probably about the third iteration of this rendering that you guys have seen, based on feedback from the last meeting, as well as some updated feedback from our structural engineers. We have changed it just a little bit from that meeting. First off, we did change the garage doors to be a little bit less industrial looking, a little bit more architecturally interesting. So we added that, that window across that kind of falls right into line with the windows in the building. And we did change the color of that garage door to be more of a beige versus a bright industrial white. We also swapped the color of the door itself, the entryway, to match that color, so it's consistent. The other major change from the last time, it's hard to see actually on here, which is by design. Our structural engineer did express concerns about using brick in the, the gable, yep, right there. They were concerned that using it would not only be more costly on just purchasing the brick, but it would also add more structural requirements to those walls. And so we'd have to do some extra reinforcement in there. And so they did recommend that we move to a siding above that soldier course there that would, in this rendering, really kind of match the brick. We're certainly open to doing some other things. We did some looking at different options as far as siding above brick. It's, it's nobody's favorite, but there are, it looks like ways that others have made it work. But like I said, in this case, the, the architect has proposed something that really matches that brick in the hopes that the shadow from the roof itself is just gonna kind of disguise that. So we've included some plans that you guys have mostly seen before. This is the landscaping plan, and this, we did take some feedback from the commission for last time. So we had presented the bushes, kind of moved away from where they are now, and I know that, I believe it was John Bano requested that they come closer to the door, so we did move those closer to the door. We also shifted the flowering crab closer to the building there, and then added another tree off to kind of the south corner of the lot there. We did retain kind of the prairie grass around that backside of the building. And we have added that outlet pipe, that superficial outlet pipe coming out along the north side of the building, tied to the building, and then discharging into a swale that's back in that kind of prairie area back there. So hopefully, it's really not visible at all between the screening, between the path and that pipe, and then getting back into that prairie area. You wanna keep going? Then I've just included the architectural drawings. Not a huge amount of change. The biggest thing, obviously, visible here is the same as what was on the rendering, so that siding up in the gable area, as well as the, the change in the garage door there with the windows. Past that, it's pretty similar to what's been presented before, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Anybody? John, you okay with that siding thing?
I think it makes a lot of sense trying to cut all the brick, just, you know, not just the cost alone, but the labor is giving millions, so, no, I'm, no. And I think that you guys have done everything that we've asked of you. I don't know what else. Perfectly reasonable. I, if you're looking for a motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yes, Mr. Motion, you have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll go back to 7A now. For discussion only, update and summary of public input on outstanding zoning text amendments concerning concealed fasteners, accessory chicken keeping, and beekeeping.
All right, so I'll give a little background, and then Sonia's here from Vandalaw, to kind of help me walk through some of the, Lauren, don't forget your coat. Um, through some of the analysis of our comments we received via email, phone, as well as some in-person meetings and the, and our community conversation that we had regarding chickens and bees in October. First, just to kind of address the, the one small item regarding concealed fasteners, maybe we, we wait till Patrick's back to, to wrap this one up, since he's, he was the one that brought this up before, but my understanding was that he did not want the concealed fastener requirement to apply to residential structures. So whether someone wants to put on a metal roof or a metal shed, a metal roof on a shed, they could have exposed fasteners if they chose to. But it would just apply to industrial, commercial buildings. So if that was your all's understanding, when we get back to kind of a public hearing draft, we can amend the language to reflect that change. So does that seem in line with what?
That seems reasonable, I think. Everybody else feel, okay?
Okay, so concerning chickens, ducks, other fowl, and beekeeping in the village, so we did have a community conversation. On October 24th, we had about a dozen people attend, including a couple of board members. So it was workshop that had kind of some small group, individual activities, small group, and then report out. So those worksheets were included later in your packet, if you wanted to see kind of the, the firsthand feedback from folks. And the, the summary that Vandalaw put together here is sort of a, a side by side comparison on what was originally proposed in the July draft here, what we saw from other kind of similarly sized communities, other suburban communities, and then feedback from the event itself. So tried our best to summarize, capture what was mentioned there at the event. I will say generally, you know, the folks that attended are active, you know, chicken or duck or other fowl keepers within the village, I think mostly chickens and ducks. Some roosters as well, and they tended to lean more on the side of, you know, less regulation, just kind of stating that this hasn't been a significant issue in the village, whether it's where a coop is located, number of birds, if roosters have been in the area, they're, they're not a common complaint. So they did, they tended to err more on the side of, you know, more flexibility, whether it's where a coop should go, number of birds, things like that. I think there was a lot of really helpful feedback, and we definitely learned a lot through the process. For example, just understanding, like licensing, so the state DAC cap, Department of Trade and Consumer Protection, I believe, Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection, they have their own licensing process, so if you are keeping birds within the state, you need to register with them. They notify folks if there are kind of public health concerns right away. Also, they require, you know, licensing if you're gonna sell eggs, things like that too. So I think the recommendation to lean on some of what's already working at a state level, that's already required, just require that people register with the state, and then the, the pressures off the village to kind of keep track of who has birds, and, and if there's some kind of, you know, avian flu or something like that, lean on the folks that are a lot more up to date on that. So Sonia and I can kind of go through these one by one. In our memo here, we, you know, this is for discussion only tonight, so we wanted to just highlight again the topics that were discussed. Some of what we heard, and, you know, we're providing some suggestions here. I think some of what we're sharing is maybe a compromise from what was presented in, in July, August. What was heard from the community, again, knowing that we're hearing from, you know, a certain population that's obviously very invested in this, and maybe not hearing from others, and maybe trying to find a bit of compromise, but that's kind of where we wanted to hear some feedback from you as, you all, as far as, you know, how much regulation, if any, do you want to see in some of these topics? You know, coops, things like that. Do we want to treat those similarly to how we treat accessory structures, like sheds, as far as setbacks, location on a lot, you know, not in a front yard, things like that? So we can kind of go down the list, one by one, but I, I guess before we do that, is there any general questions about feedback we've received, or direction at this point, generally? Okay.
I don't think so.
The only question I've got is, because we have three members out today, would it be better off, so that we're not sort of recreating the wheel in another month? Would it be better to sort of just pause this until we have more people, or until it's more than more, until it's more for just discussion purposes? Or are you really needing some feedback? I, I'm not trying to be dismissive, I'm just.
Um, well, Joy, do we know any folks in January so far that can't make it? Okay, I'm open to either. If you wanted to just table it again until January for discussion. I think whether it's now or at the next meeting, I think we do want to get some direction from you all and have, make sure that you all had time to read through the feedback that we got from the community, and we can have discussion about what, you know, level of regulation, if any, on these topics. Yeah, I guess, you know, we'll be curious to hear from you all, where you want to kind of land on this.
You know, we have a few people here, I think, that are, that are here interested in this, so they.
And Sonia's here as well, from Vandalaw.
Okay, so don't waste, okay, so we don't waste any time, or their time.
You know, I suppose we can just discuss it, and then.
Yeah, I think we should, at, at least preliminary here, I've got a couple of things here, a couple of questions I have. And I think you're going the right direction. Your, your table here shows a lot of, you know, information. The first thing that sticks out to my mind, and, and I'm, well, let me back up, let me back up. Coop size, coop size typically isn't very large. And the reasons for that is because they don't want a large coop, I suspect. Number of birds, I see we have a number of six in one, one locale, and eight in another locale. I'm not sure where we go with that, but we can discuss that. The thing that sticks out to me is the, 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 and when you say we have to, these things, they have to register with the state of Wisconsin? I'm surprised, okay, not surprised. But they register, they, is there any fees that they have to pay to the state of Wisconsin? I, they, I mean, the people who have the coops, that thing? Is there any, any cost to the, yes, ma'am?
Uh, you have to register through DAC cap. Uh, you have to get a company number, anybody with any type of livestock, animal, relative state of Wisconsin, whether you're in town or out of town.
Seriously.
Is there a fee, is there a fee associated with that?
There is not. It is free.
Okay.
But the Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection is very on top of, you know, any diseases, birds coming in and out, animals actually coming in and out of the state. They're enforcing and they're paying attention.
So enlighten me again, please. So, so we go out to somebody's farm, and they got 50 chickens. They gotta register those suckers?
You have, oh, you have to register your premise.
Okay.
That you have chickens.
That you have animals.
Individually, because that number is.
That's right, well, and if they have, other than fowl?
Yeah, I believe it's any animal. You have to register. My aunt uncle lives in Watertown area, and they have to do the same thing. They have goats, they're getting dog stats because they all live outdoors. And you do have to prove that you have that number, like when you show at the fairs, and.
When you say prove that you have that number, meaning?
Meaning you have to, in order to show at any county or state fairs.
Oh, sure, sure, I'm sure, sure. Okay, I get that. Okay.
You know, there's no way around it. You have to be registered.
Have to remind my daughter, she has some different things.
Right.
Well, her husband works for the DNR, I'm sure he knows. Okay, so I'm surprised at that. But again, there's no, they just simply registering with the state said, we are a, a entity that, that raises chickens, goats, sheep, cattle, horses, et cetera, et cetera. Okay.
Name, address, where the, you know, animals are located.
Okay, all right.
And that way they keep track, in case anything.
Okay, we're, we're.
Also, if some backyard's super head, or flue, you know, everybody within two miles is gonna be knowing that.
All right, wow, well.
But we get emails from them all the time. They're on top of it.
That's why I do this, this education at companies meetings, so.
More than that.
Yeah. Do you want to give us any more advice at this point, or, yeah?
I think Elise covered the background really well. I think I'll just add a little bit about sort of best practices zoning and what we found in the comparable communities, and then continue discussion here, what you all have to say. And the background here is that chickens are not currently allowed in residential zoning districts in the ordinance, so the attempt here was to make that illegal, recognized, permissive use. The standards that were drafted in what came before you in July and August were really based on sort of common comparable community standards. And so going through a little bit deeper dive into what those comparable standards were before the community conversation was really helpful, just to double check what other communities are doing. And so that was provided in an 11 by 17 version in your packet, and we also discussed it with the group. A lot of the, the standards that were proposed are on par with those comparables, and you've mentioned some of them. Number of chickens, really common to have six, eight. Fitchburg has a prorated scale, but they also are much differently situated than other communities because their city lands incorporate all of the true rural and agricultural preservation zoning land as well. And, you know, other common things, prohibition of roosters. But that's not to say that that's the direction that Oregon needs to go. And so, yeah, recognizing who we received the feedback from, but also thinking about the purpose of these regulations and, and what it means to live in a residential zoning district. You know, this is not an agricultural zoning district, it's not a, a business zoning district, just like we don't allow sort of auto repair and salvage yard. I'm not saying that that's comparable to chickens, but just keeping that in mind in terms of ultimately what direction you go. And so that's when Elise and I, in drafting the bullet points in the memo, tried to identify where that compromise could maybe expand from what we currently have. And, and I think that's just where I'll leave it, and we can go through.
All right, all right. That, again, what led me to all these, these questions is I see there's some discussion of, of license, without licenses, didn't say fee, I'm sorry, I right away went to fee. Is there any discussion of fees?
I think the, the feedback we got was if there was going to be a village level registration, that having it be one time and no or very low cost. Similar to like dog and cat registration, something like that, I think, was.
Yeah, because, you know, is there, is, is there any real costs to the village associated with this, any real degree? As long as everybody plays nice and keeps it, you know, off the side yard and all that type of stuff.
Administratively, I mean, yeah, some costs, maybe just taking in, you know, the, the paperwork, but I guess the question is, is there really a purpose to that? If we could have access to the state list, and we could ask for, you know, residents or locations, premises that are within the village of Oregon? If we've wanted to say, okay, well, we know that this person over here is keeping chickens, let's verify that they actually are registered with the state. So it seems a little duplicative, and I think I'm a fan of less paperwork, so anytime we can eliminate that, I think it, it wouldn't cause any harm if we didn't have a village registration, separate system.
All right, okay, again, this is all stuff we, but again, I wanted to get out here so we all talk about a little bit before, if we're gonna, you know, kind of table it somewhat till.
Yeah.
January.
Can you, can you educate me on sort of the, the stepping into the state? Does the county have requirements, those kinds of things? And, and are they sort of broad, a little bit less, and then what we would be doing is a little bit more finite, or?
So I'll take the first crack, just from a zoning perspective, but what, what I know of the state rules is what was just described, licensing requirement, if you're selling eggs, you must register there to have permission to do that. County rules, from a land use perspective, are only going to apply in unincorporated areas, so the townships. And then the village rules are really what are going to specify setbacks, size, number of birds. I think there are best practices outside of that regulatory hierarchy, you know, and resources and sort of respected organizations that have guidelines for, you know, minimum square footage that you should have for a bird, but none of those actually have any authority in Oregon. Those are just sort of the resources that we've got.
But in other words, we're not subject to any Dane County zoning. We have our own.
All right.
Zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand if, if the state, and I'm just trying to throw it out here, if the state has requirements that you've got an acre of land, and that means that one acre equals six chickens, four, four ducks and two dogs, whatever, do we really need to have another layer at ours?
So it sounds like the state isn't asking about numbers, or what's your local, you know.
And none of that applies.
Local zoning regulations, right?
So what we're talking about, the state is more about registration of animals on a property? And then what we would be talking about is sort of where they're placed and how many you could have on your property at any given time.
Right, within the village specifically.
Sorry to be ignorant on that.
No, no, that makes, that makes sense.
I don't know if you all would like to maybe just go down each bullet point one by one and say, you know, if you have any thoughts or suggestions, or we, if there's something you want to weigh. I don't know if you all would like to maybe just go down each bullet point one by one and say, you know, if you have any thoughts or suggestions or if there's something you wanna wait to discuss when we have.
Well, it wouldn't hurt, as long as we're here and we, people are here, let's just, I think it'd make a sense to do that so that when we address it again, we're that further ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Sonia, do you wanna take bullet points one by one?
Okay, so number of birds, what we started with was six, um, very common in comparable communities to have a six bird maximum. Really limited to, um, just common chickens, I don't know the, the best sort of description or scientific name for that, um, particular species, but just six birds. And then I think in one or two communities, there was a little bit of flexibility in the city of Middleton, I believe. They allowed eight birds if you had a property that was over a half an acre. And Fitchburg, um, uses a prorated kind of animal, uh, units per acre type of number. But really what that amounted to was, um, you know, for a ten thousand square foot lot, still six birds, so a common residential lot, six birds. Here, uh, at the feedback that we received was maybe having no maximum. Um, and some of the justification was, you know, the, the people that are keeping the chickens, um, should know what minimum requirements there are to maintain a healthy flock. And so if they have more, um, maybe that should be acceptable to their discretion. Other reasons, six can be limiting if you have little baby chicks at the beginning and they don't make it, and so then you end up with three when really, you know, the health of the flock, social creatures. Um, and then one other point that was raised was, um, different species of chickens can be smaller and therefore maybe you should have a, a larger number. But for really common zoning, um, sort of standard chicken, um, we were looking at that smaller number, again, residential zoning in mind, and so we thought, do we increase to something like twelve so that there is a quantitative, um, metric? Or do you want to explore that further where there's no maximum? But we ensure that through these other bullet points, we're still mitigating. From a zoning perspective, you okay there?
I'm okay, I just scared that guy, I didn't think I did either.
And just to add one thing to that too, I think leaning on more, kind of mentioned here, but quality of life over quantity of life. Um, I think a lot of the feedback we got, especially at the event in October, was that, oh, birds are a lot of work and when you have a larger flock, it is inherently more work, you know, more cost to feed them, things like that too. And, um, people aren't likely to take on more than they feel like they can manage in a healthy way. And if there are, you know, too many chickens, they're not being taken care of, they're, they're not going to survive. And so the, um, you're kind of naturally encouraged to take on what you can handle. And, you know, again, allowing people that flexibility to, to take on what they feel. We, we kinda talked about this with ducks too. They're, they kinda said, y'all, there are duck people and there are people who are not duck people, people who are duck people, they understand what they need. Um, and they understand the work that's involved if they don't take care of the, um, you know, the coop and the water needs and, you know, up, things like that. Obviously, there could be an effect to neighbors with smell and other things like that, but that they would kind of very quickly see the effect that that would have on their flock. If they had kind of bit off more than they could chew or, um, needed to adjust how they were managing the birds.
Initially, it seems like such a simple thing to deal with and all of a sudden, ah, I'm leaning towards, you know, not necessarily putting a limit up, but then again, somebody starts to decide and they wanna start filling your whole backyard up with meat chickens, I don't know. I wanna believe this, you know what, we have an expert, let's just let him talk. Go ahead, Larry.
I've been around it a lot.
I think so, yeah. Thank you.
I see the, uh, the, the way we're moving, I like and that we're, we're kind of finding some middle ground. And, uh, I think the numbers, uh, it, it's good to stay within the range of what's in the community and the Dane County community. If you don't have any, any requirements for numbers, you might be found as the, the, the best village in Dane County or Southern Wisconsin to have birds. And you end up with chickens and you end up with a lot of overpopulation. This Department of Egg Trade and Consumer Protection, their Animal Health Division is responsible for making sure that animals and livestock, livestock which they, they, uh, the state county says livestock means this many of this and this many of this. And when it comes to poultry, it's one, if you have one chicken, you have to register your premises as a life, livestock, uh, producing space. Existing space anyhow. I, uh, the, the thing that I, uh, would want to make sure that we're not concentrating too many, poultry in our, in our, in our living space here and in the village, the community as a whole, including the cities and, and the townships that are around us, have a lot of rural spaces that are, that were built and developed because they were agriculture, so. But the, the thing with ducks and geese and swans are the biggest carrier of, uh, transmission of the avian flu virus. Into odd areas, there's, right now, there's an outbreak of, uh, swine flu virus, a high pathogen. A high, hybrid of the, uh, the disease virus. And, uh, the USDA is real interested in keeping on track of that and keeping it under control so that there's a kind of a, a progressive, uh, immunity that develops. And the process will probably be vaccines that come out for it. To use it to keep your herds from getting infected with it and cutting your production way back and, and causing a lot of animals to need to be culled because they're not keeping up with, uh, what's expected. And then the other factor then is the, uh, biosecurity and the zoonotic, uh, levels of, of exposure of humans and animals and passing the same bugs through, uh, each of us and each species and, and, uh, possibilities of some disasters that way. And we've, we've experienced some pandemic in our last few years that wasn't avian flu, but it was, uh, avian flu could become that, that bad. So I, I think trying to keep the numbers lower and get the, uh, dilute out the, the, uh, the possibilities of getting zoonotic diseases or, uh, biosecurity problems traversed into being a problem where we are pressed at. And I, the people that we've heard from at the public meetings and, and the hearings that we've had in the workshop, uh, were very good, uh, poultry people, they were educated, they've worked with the, uh, the, uh, Oregon High School Agriculture and Biosciences Division who are involved in, students doing some very interesting projects, including, and using poultry to do that and, and genetics and, and, uh, learning their, uh, facts and, and, uh, applications of what they're learning in their school to, uh, to where they could be as a job or an expert or a producer. So, uh, I think that, uh, the protecting against the outliers that might come along that you don't even know about because they, they, uh, they come in and, and do what you're suggesting could happen with the whole backyard full of chickens. Could be a source of a lot of problems and I don't, I think we want to keep the education level up as much as possible. And what that means working with the, with the, uh, high school program, and which they have put, had a lot of input with us already, uh, through the, uh, through the sessions that we've had. And the, the expression that they had when they were here is commended them for, I commend them for doing that and coming here as a learning process. And I think we can carry this out with a little compromise and, and maybe not be so tight on our, our low number. But, uh, uh, somewhere that's be controllable. And I, I don't think it's a good thing to be the, the one that has the lowest requirement in Dane County for getting poultry numbers. The, the ducks and geese, that was just one more thing, the ducks, geese and swans are, I think, and maybe I said that before, are the biggest carriers of, of, uh, the avian virus and from transmitting it from where they nest in North in the Arctic and all the way down to, to our holding ponds down here as they migrate fast through here in the fall. But, uh, the, uh, keeping, uh, keeping educated on that and trying to stay within limits is a good thing.
Alright, thank you, thank you. I'm noticing up there, um, in my mind, before reading that one paragraph, before the number of birds. I, I had a thought of, and again, we, we don't have to decide tonight, I had a thought of twelve and, uh, as a max. I don't know how many folks are here that actually have birds in the village and I guess I'd be curi-, okay, let's find out. Tell me how many you folks have. Whitney, how many do you have? Eight, okay. You folks?
I really couldn't tell you right now, it's very fluid, um, because.
Well.
We have chicks, we have layers, and we have showbirds.
Okay, let's, tell me the layers. I, cause the chicks to me don't, you know, you, you, you rotate through, so.
Right, we rotate through those and the showbirds, we rotate through those too. And I, so you have the layers, you have showbirds, we have meat birds, three different types of birds.
Oh, yeah.
Consider change, you know, you're gonna put a limit on, you know, put a limit on the number of meat birds.
I don't know, that's, that, and that's where my comment before was, I was afraid of, well, how it could become so difficult to make such easy decisions, but it's. It is, but, well, you know, I, I keep envisioning somebody's backyard with pens and all these meat birds and I, you know, I'm familiar, I don't raise them, trust me. But my daughter does and I see the meat birds and, and, uh, they grow rapidly and, um, you know, there's a lot of them. But can somebody in the village go, oh gee, I'm gonna raise fifty birds? Yes ma'am?
Oh, I would just like to add the, um, act department at the high school.
Yep.
We just recently finished up a project where, um, we took a bunch of meat birds, we ordered them, we ended up raising nineteen. Um, not in that big of a pen, it was enough though to the, um, better, the.
The UN kind of, yeah, best practice standards.
And it wasn't much bigger than, it wasn't much smaller than four of those tables.
Oh, no, I, the meat birds don't need, they just grow.
Yeah, um, we had nineteen there and then we raised them up in eight weeks, we donated it under the food pantry and everybody learned something from it, it was really great educational experience.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I understand that, you know, that's a great thing that this high school's doing. I'm just thinking that we're, we're having a, a backyard, small, uh, enterprise raising meat birds. And, and that's something that I guess I never thought about. To me, it's folks just, they wanna have some chickens, they raise some eggs and maybe give it to people, maybe sell a couple dozen here and there. Great, I think it's wonderful. But how do we control all this stuff?
Did you wanna share something?
Yeah.
Rebecca, who has been coming, she does meat birds, so she would have a better, she would be one that you wanna talk to.
Okay.
She's done meat birds, I don't know how she, um, raises them, but she's right in town here, right in Greta, in this neighborhood. And, um, none of her neighbors have ever, ever, ever complained she's doing this.
I understand that, but.
So they can be, I do understand what you're saying about the limit. And I do get that part about you could just move in and then there's no limit, you're gonna have somebody that's gonna just throw a whole bunch of chickens in the backyard.
Right.
But to, setting a limit may not be so bad, um, it's regulating that, number one. And you're only, right now, at this juncture, we're spending a lot of tax dollar monies going over something for twenty-five households, you said, out of all of Oregon that has chickens or.
Well, if you think that we're, we're, here's, by the, we're not getting paid, so, so you're not, it's not costing you anything for us, so, yeah, but you're right.
I'm just saying like, you know, I mean, it's a big discussion for right now, something that doesn't seem to be an issue. However, you and I did discuss why it's brought up and I understand why it's brought up, there are people that are coming in.
Well, we need the village, the village has, you know, cause sooner or later, somebody's gonna complain. And, and we need some procedures or, or, or.
But then, so like, when it comes down to like roosters or smell complaints, aren't there other things already in?
I don't know, rooster.
Like a smell complaint, let's say my neighbor had, hasn't taken their garbage out in like six months and they're piling up garbage, I mean, isn't that?
Yeah, there's, we do venoxious odors, I think is what it's called.
When all of that stuff fall or like a noise complaint, so it's like my neighbor's dog barks more than my rooster pro's. But I'm gonna get in trouble because I have a rooster, but my neighbor who registered their dog and I'm signed as, you know, I have all of my chickens or my premise registered. And my daughter uses the rooster for breeding purposes and showing purposes, but now I'm gonna get in trouble. The neighbor didn't like to hear that's throwing.
Yeah.
But the dog barks far more.
I know, I, I, I get that, but we're, you know, we're gonna talk about chickens and we're gonna talk about dogs, we're not.
Come back when we talk about dogs.
For like those types of regulations, I would, I would assume I'd get more of a noise violation.
Well, that's possible, then again.
After so many violations, I'd get a fine because I have so many noise violations.
But you could have your rooster next to me, it wouldn't bother me, but it might be a bother to somebody else, so, yeah.
I know, and I get that.
So, you know, this, this whole thing is crazy and we deal with this all the time, we keep getting deeper and deeper into the weeds. I thought this was a piece.
How far, yeah, how far are we gonna get into the weed? One other, two other points I forgot to mention too, in the memo, was number of birds. Um, I don't know if we had this further down too, but talked about like for chicks, um, similar how we have like for dogs and cats, uh, that animals under six months of age wouldn't count towards that total because you do get the chicks and they're raised inside or, or whatever it might be. We, we will often start with a larger amount and then, you know, maybe some of them don't make it. So I think whatever we end up, I think we'd probably recommend some language like that. And then also with regards to the school, um, we may mention this further down again in the memo. But, um, I think we're just talking about residential properties here, I think, uh, anything that's sort of institutional zone. So whether it's a school or municipal building, church, something like that, you got to, different, you know, land and, um, their own.
Maybe, I probably shouldn't say it out loud either, but you know, if, if we say it's twelve and you got thirteen, the cops aren't coming, I don't think, you know?
They don't come for a dog, right, so they're not gonna come for any of the chickens.
Phil, did you wanna say something before?
Uh, mainly listening, I, one thing, one point I would make though is, you, you mentioned, we're talking about this for twenty-five people, but I think we're, actually, we're talking about not only the twenty-five people that have chickens, but the eight thousand people that don't. If, if that's fair enough.
Right, that's true, that's a good comment. So we, you know, what, what we try to do, if I get that correct, is we're looking at the vill-, is the planning commission, the village. Okay, so whatever we feel is best for the village and we try to do our best and, yes ma'am?
Um, like I said before, there was, you know, you have meat birds, layer birds and showbirds. If you put a restriction on like the number of meat birds and then not on the layers, because if you have layered chickens, you have them for eggs.
I know.
Chickens that are not happy do not lay eggs, they just cost you money. So anybody who's a chicken owner, you know, you're not gonna have, you know, a lot of chickens out there, hundred chickens out in your backyard because they're not gonna be happy, they're not gonna get you what you need. You're gonna do what you can that's best for your chickens and that includes overcrowding, you know, avoiding overcrowding and, you know, the space issues. As you monitor your own.
I could, I could appreciate that, but it depends, you know, again, the number of meat chickens, I mean.
Who's gonna come out and count what types of chickens?
Well, but the thing is, but.
What's a meat chicken, what's a layer, yeah.
I don't think, in my mind, I don't think that we need to, I don't think we should define.
Yeah.
A type of chicken.
No, no.
I think that what we should do is define an age at where you start to count them. And what I mean by that is if you say, look, we're gonna only allow X number of chickens, whatever that number is, but they're only above the age of eight weeks. That means the chicks are out, that means that most fryers or meat birds are out and you're talking about chickens that you keep around for laying. That means that chicks are out, that means that most fryers or meat birds are out and you're talking about chickens that you keep around for laying.
I just, how do you age them?
I don't want it to be complicated.
Yeah, I don't.
I understand.
And I don't, I, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't care about some of the other stuff, you know, we can get into the weeds pretty easily.
Yeah.
I wanna stay out of it. And I think the easiest way to sort of define that is an age.
I, 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 I think that's a good idea, but I'm just pointing out chickens, you know, depending on the breed, don't start laying until like three or four months old.
Okay.
And they stop at three.
But let's, let's, okay, let's, let's, I think the big thing is, we're getting into this, God, I didn't, meat birds laying, layers. How long does it take you to mature your meat birds? Six to eight weeks. So, if we said birds over, we call them as birds over twelve weeks, I'm just throwing it out there. The meat layer, the meters, meat guys aren't around, they're gone.
Right. And then, uh, they usually stop laying at like two and a half, three years.
And you're gonna get rid of them?
They're pets by that time.
Oh, my God.
You can't really get rid of them, but they, you know, they're still there.
Well, okay, but you're not gonna keep eight pets. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, and I think this brings up a good question about, again, enforcement, whether it's
Yeah.
you know, whose job is it to go and either age these birds, you know, count these birds, I think what we all wanna, we're all in agreement that we wanna make sure that we just don't have that kind of worst case scenario.
Right.
Where somebody has, you know, completely affected a neighborhood because they have a large scale, um, production, so where's the middle ground in that? Um, maybe, maybe we should move on to the next.
I was gonna say, because what's happening is we are, we are, we are acting just like a government right now.
If we pick a number and we'll say excluding chicks.
Excluding chicks and, 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 and we say a number, I know, and then I think the age thing is not bad either. I mean. Well, no, here's the thing, you raise, you're gonna have layers and you're gonna have probably, if you're raising meat chickens, you're gonna have, this, I'm getting into it.
Afraid that, who's gonna decide if they're meat chickens or they're layers?
Oh, there's a difference.
Oh, I know there's a difference, but I'm saying, are we gonna like send somebody around every three months and count them out?
You won't have to, I don't think. I think we're getting too deep into it.
Right, so I say, let's just pick.
This will again, probably be like with many things, whether it's noise, smell, whatever, complaint driven, so.
Yes. So then do you go a little higher than twelve or?
Well, the, the, uh, highest, I think that you found, Tony, was twelve, is that correct?
Uh, the highest, the highest is six as a standard with eight in Middleton, if you have over a half acre. Fitchburg is an outlier that I don't think is comparable, twelve would be the highest in Dane County. And then with what we're discussing, um, you would be able to have more than twelve on quite a regular basis if you have chicks and meat layers.
Nine.
Twelve. I like twelve, you like eight, nine, both?
Yeah, well, I think we've got some feedback, just in an effort to maybe move down the list.
That's right.
We've got some feedback as far as ages, numbers, so, um, depending on, you know, our overall next step, so you and I could definitely work on what are some ways we can describe that.
And the suggestions to the folks that wanna have their chickens, make sure that you don't create complaints.
Right, and I think overall, ninety-nine percent are.
I understand, yeah, I do, I, I, you don't even notice it.
Yeah. All right, so we move on.
Let's move on, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so for this one, um, we did not hear much pushback against establishing a minimum, although I don't think that that's absolutely necessary for us to define their common standards, so we could have that minimum in there, um, if we wanted to, I think we did start with a minimum.
Oh, minimum run, they're the.
Um, so, yeah, there were different standards for a coop versus a run, um, so just staying on the coop for a second. Feedback at the event was, um, again, eliminate a maximum coop size, it should be whatever is appropriate for the flock that they're keeping. However, uh, our sort of compromise approach is to still align it with common zoning standards. We don't allow maximum garage size, maximum garden shed size, um, so, you know, we can remove that maximum number and is someone going to build a one thousand square foot chicken coop? Probably not, um, but they're going to have a chicken coop and a garage and all of that is going to, to fall within the maximum amount of accessory structures. So the question is, do you want a more defined maximum? We started with one hundred and fifty square feet, or would you defer to the zoning code standards?
Zoning code.
Zoning code.
Okay. All right, so for the run, um, do you want to get into requiring, specifically requiring an enclosed run? Or, or do you wanna provide an or situation where if you don't have an enclosed run, you must have a fenced backyard?
Well.
Good, good.
For clarification, you would need one or the other, right? We're, we're not gonna allow free range, so we're either gonna have a fenced yard or.
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we have to get into the size of a run.
No.
You're gonna, you know, the folks that.
They need to be closer than out.
People that have chickens, yeah.
And I'm sure you don't want it out in the street either.
No.
Is there a ordinance with any animal that you have, that you own has to stay on your property?
Yes, yep, but yeah, leased dogs, things like that, right, other than dog park.
Yeah.
We now have to add the chickens to it though, so you saw that.
Right, stay on your property, which that's been one of the handful of complaints that I've had over the years, is that chickens have been
Yep.
flying into neighboring backyards, so I think that's probably pretty reasonable, I mean, folks don't wanna
Sure.
feel like they can't let their dogs out in their yard because their neighbor's chickens are hanging out, so. Okay, I think that one's probably pretty straightforward.
Okay, uh, location, no other communities allow any accessory structures in a front yard, including coops. So our approach here was, uh, um, rear yard or a side yard, as long as you're meeting the setback for that structure. Feedback at the event varied, um, some wanting to allow it in a front yard. And also, uh, this sort of relates to the setbacks, which is the next bullet point, um, and I'll just stop there, maybe we'll take that, that separately. Uh, so the question of location, do you want to allow them in the front yard or continue to limit them to the rear?
That's just my thought, I, I should.
Seems like we exclude the front yard.
Ex- exclude, certainly, we don't want.
And then as far as the side yard, if you, again, we defer to the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Street side yard, yeah, for a corner lot.
Right, yeah, right, absolutely.
You're right with the front yard thing.
When, when you say, well, okay, with, no, nothing in the front.
I'm asking John.
No, no, I don't, I don't like them in the front yard.
No.
Yeah.
Back inside.
Yes, okay.
Uh, so for setbacks, the draft ordinance did go a little bit further than a standard zoning, because I think there was an additional restriction that your coop has to meet the setbacks, but also that it needs to be a certain distance away from a residence on the adjacent lot, and maybe that's getting into too much detail was sort of what we heard at the event, and I think that would be a fine compromise, if you're meeting the setbacks, uh, from the property line. The number of situations where you're also within ten feet of a nearby residence are probably rare to none anyway.
Shouldn't be any, this should, because, yeah, there shouldn't be, because that, that residence should be adhering to the side, or the setback.
Right, that's usually ten feet or
Right.
from a side yard to a residence anyway, so. If they followed accessory structure rules, it should be at least fifteen feet, probably away from a greenhouse at a minimum.
Okay.
I think it's okay with that.
Okay, so, uh, this one is again getting back into, um, maybe one that has more conversation, we've already touched on some of the points. Um, other poultry. Roosters, ducks, quail, geese were specifically discussed at the workshop, no specific concerns with quail, didn't find any concerns, you know, in comparable communities or best practices. Ducks, um, can be more work, can be messier, can potentially have more smells. But not as much concern with, um, geese, who are maybe more aggressive and maybe carry more disease. So, and then roosters, um, prohibited across the comparable communities, uh, maybe we wanna take roosters separately from the others, but, uh, the compromise sort of direction that we were going here is allow quail and chickens, uh, prohibit geese. Ducks, a little bit of a policy call for you all, um, a couple of other communities allow ducks, I have experience with getting complaints about ducks due to the smell, um, and some, some communities handle it fine.
And then again, just noting here that there were, and she brought it up as well, um, the rooster kind of noise complaint comparison to maybe a barking dog, um, you know, roosters are typically only crowing if they really need something, it probably depends personality to personality, some are more talkative than others, but, um, you know, should they be outlawed completely or again, just dealt with more on a complaint, um, basis if they are causing?
I would tend towards the complaint as opposed to outlawing, because, you know, again, I witnessed that here, we've got some breeding that goes on. You know, um.
What, if, I, I could ask, is the breeding associated with school or FFA or, and only that?
Um, yeah, so I breed my chickens together and I show them through FFA and, um, I like there and showing things like that. So that's, and I learn a lot from breeding.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
She has an interest in peteogenesis, so.
You worried me, you were undoing that code, I swear to God, you're gonna take a duck, a chicken out of there.
They've been so quiet this whole time. Yeah, um, with regards to ducks too, I mean, the, the half acre, we don't have a lot of residential lots that are, that are gonna be that size over a half acre. Um, I know some of the folks that share that they do keep ducks, um, were kind of in the South Main Street, uh, like Washington Street neighborhood, so just south of downtown, so those are, um, historic lots, some of them are deeper than others, but, um, you know, a lot of them are pretty narrow, they're really close to neighbors and things, but those have not been, um, locations where I've received complaints.
I think, you know, um, we haven't had, uh, as far as you know, have we had complaints about ducks?
Not in my time here at the village, typically about ducks.
Oh, with ducks, I'm so concerned about the roosters. Uh, I'm reading here, roosters are unanimously prohibited in comparable communities, there's gotta be a reason.
I got that, I know that.
Sorry?
Well, no.
I doubt that it's.
That's why they have them in because of pack fighting, that's why they would have them.
Well, then that would be why we would want it too.
But then there should be exceptions for, for shows and then there should be some.
I'm willing to consider a carve out for, for education.
You could do that, couldn't you, for, that'd be, you could do a.
Right, or, or home breeding, right, no.
Right, you could, we could do that.
Hot fighting, just, yeah, same.
I think there was something in one of them at one point, um, for education, uh, agricultural educational purposes. Some ordinances.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I do understand why they would ban roosters because of all the pack fighting that is. And, you know, and we'll get some people that come in that want to do that.
Yeah. Most, most folks that have roosters that you know, do they have multiple roosters or typically just one at a time?
It really depends, um, like for me, I only have one, um, because he'll be, and I only have five hens to go with him. Any more hens, it just is not the right number, um, they're small and I rotate him out. Um, he also is a very small bird, so he doesn't make a ton of noise, um, but, um, I've had mean roosters before and I've taken them to the farm, so I don't keep, nobody likes, especially in a small backyard, you're not gonna keep a mean rooster.
No.
You're gonna get rid of them right away, you're gonna find somebody and there are places that will take them, there's lots of places that will take roosters. I think most people are not gonna keep roosters.
Right, yeah, no. But the carve out, like you, like you were saying, Phil, was, would be reasonable, and, and you, we could include that in this, whatever we wind up with in the order.
Correct.
So that we don't have a, a conditional use or anything like that, we don't wanna deal with that.
There are uses of roosters or fighting or whatever that's going on, so, well, this is not what they're intended for, um.
Well.
If their complaints are.
Well, the carve, carve out would be education.
Correct.
Yeah.
You can tell us it's educational.
Just, just check the educational box on the.
Yeah, just check it on you, okay.
Check the educational box when you fill out your. Yeah, you didn't hear it here, though. Oh, this is taped, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's on TV.
Yeah.
I think that, for me, um, totally on board with no geese, totally on, um, not a, um, I'm fine with the carve out for, or the rooster. Uh, I think that for me, ducks, not only because of what Larry had mentioned earlier, but ducks are noisy, you know?
Yeah, they are.
Um, you get a, you get a, a, a bunch of ducks together and they're not quiet and, um, they're not clean unless you take care of them, and the people that I have seen in the town, the village, that, that have them, take amazing care of them.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I would say that the limiting factor on ducks for me would be, they have to have a lot that's over a third of an acre.
I'm just trying to be an advocate for those people, I mean, that they could be like grandfathered and they can't get more duck, but they can't, you're, because now if you put that in, does that mean they're gonna have to like get rid of ducks?
Well, that's just my, that's my starting point.
We don't, we don't have any, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not, we're not putting together an ordinance this evening, you know, so.
If one does and you wanna eliminate ducks, and that, that would be your.
Fair question.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
And those that currently have them being grandfathered, how they are.
It's not a bad.
We've talked about grandfathering just in general, whether folks have, you know,
Right.
higher numbers or multiple roosters or whatever, you know, um, or ducks. Um, and I think maybe when we get to that point of writing the ordinance, we would have some kind of language about, you know, X, you know, whether it's a year or two or more, you know, past this ordinance being adopted, you know, current users would be grandfathered in and then whatever, two years out, it's, it's in effect, so if somebody did have a complaint, we can enforce. That would be my suggestion, sort of like a, a, a rambling off and then an education too for folks, though, when people call and.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah, grandfather thing is fine with the ducks.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be okay.
As long as, you know, but the ordinance will read no ducks.
Right, in the future, yeah, I, cause I've seen these people, they got this cute little pond out in the front yard, a little, not pond.
I'd like further to be swans also, they, uh, no, not allowed.
Right.
They're, they're, uh, they're a real problem.
Yes, no, we, we're not gonna, you're right, thank you. Quail's not a problem.
Chicken, yeah.
Quails are not a problem.
No.
They're, they're kind of miniature chickens and they don't take up much space and don't cause as much trouble.
No, no. What's next?
Slaughtering.
No.
Yes, Greg.
Unanimously, kind of, I think there were a couple of communities that didn't mention it, so, um, questionable there, how they would handle it. Uh, just from a zoning perspective, again, you know, a chicken here or there, your neighbor doesn't know what's happening, that's not the purpose here, it's, it's trying to draw the line between what you would commonly expect in a rural zoning district, but we're talking about residential zoning districts.
Right, that's right.
Um, so, I, I think initially there was a concern about humane slaughter, we're really not concerned with that either. And we can clarify if that's best in the ordinance, although we don't wanna get too far into the weeds with all of these things and define every circumstance. So the question is, um, do you want to allow any slaughter if you have meat birds, et cetera, or do you wanna prohibit it altogether? I would say if you are keeping meat birds and, um, you want to, you know, engage in the slaughter, then, um, that could potentially occur off premise as well, that doesn't mean that you can't do that activity as a family, but on the premise, maybe not.
If we're also talking about maybe limiting the number of birds, maybe this large scale slaughtering of chickens isn't as much of a concern and maybe isn't something that we need to, to get into.
It's not like the way it was when my grandmother did it, so, and I had to clean them, so, no.
Do we have people, uh, dressing out deer in town and hanking them out? I think we have before.
But, uh, well, they shouldn't be, but I, I certainly cut mine up, yeah.
Yeah.
It's already been dispatched.
Right, and if it's, if we're twelve, nine to twelve bird max, do you even want to get into it?
No, you know what? No, 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 we're not gonna. No, 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 we're not gonna even.
I just, I just think it just hands off on this one.
Yep, you're right, thank you.
One thing that, uh, I don't know if you covered it, or maybe are yet to cover, it would be the storage of feed supplies and. I think the, uh, it should be, uh, stored in something that is metal, it cannot be, uh. In, invaded by rats and that it, and they be stored in. Within the coop space or in a garage or basement.
Yes, that's great, that's the next one on our list, and I think that's the sort of compromise that we were moving in as well, I think. Again, the concern was that there were too many things in here telling everyone how to handle their chickens, but for the purpose of storing feed, there is an impact. On other nuisances that can be generated with rodents, so, um, I think we would be looking at language that says either indoors or in a secure. Metal container. Licensing, are, would you like to defer, uh.
Yep.
To DAPC.
No, we, we've already, I told my wife, oh, this will be easy one tonight, no problem.
I'll be home in an hour.
No controversial stuff.
Did we cover the above bullet point, you think?
Oh, I missed that one.
Okay.
Which one?
Um, indoor keeping a fowl, so initial ordinance said you may not keep, uh, birds indoors. In climate weather, raising young chicks, I know that people bring them in, and when they're sick, maybe this isn't something we need to get into if you have an issue indoors that's gonna be handled through.
We don't need to stick our nose in everybody's business.
Yep, we don't really concern ourselves with other things happening inside unless it is creating nuisance for folks outside.
Right, it's not, yeah.
Right, garages, other things like that.
Yep, okay, uh, beekeeping, I'm not sure how you wanna address this, but that's all we had for chickens, and I think we got good feedback.
Hope does not meet bees.
So, the beekeeping, I'll just say, this is probably the area where we had, you know, obviously fewer comments, but also, um. The most comments kind of on the other side of the fence, concerns, mostly about allergies and proximity of beehives to homes, I think the folks that I heard from. I'd heard from in the past about, they have neighbors that kept them and they just didn't feel that they were built well or kept safe, um. Sadly contained, I know, um, bees need a lot of access to fresh water, and. This particular neighbor said, I don't feel that my neighbors that have the bees are providing them access to water, so they're coming to my yard where I have a bird bath, I. Enjoy watching birds, but I'm allergic to bees and it prohibits my use of my backyard, so, um. There was also some language about, you know, maybe this isn't a residential use, but more, uh. Industrial, commercial areas further away from homes, same time, bees cannot be. Contained on a property in the way that maybe you could control, you know, your, your chickens, um, obviously they're gonna fly and. Do their thing and come back to the hive, um.
But you can probably control the number of hives.
Right, we can control the number of hives, we can require, you know, freshwater source, things like that too, and then again, if there are concerns about they're not being.
And we already had a.
You know, kept responsibly, then we can check in on that.
Yeah, and we already had a, a draft ordinance that again is based on commonly applied zoning standards that take all these things into consideration. We didn't hear from anybody that was advocating for more bees, so I think at least we know that we're not. Moving in a direction of peeling back those regulations, um, and if anything, if there are more people that are concerned with sort of allergy and safety, we can look into that. Uh, more specifically, but, um, at this time, I don't know that we have any specific changes to propose to the beekeeping.
Okay.
I think we made it through, so, what, what all, would you guys like to see maybe before we come back with a. Another public hearing, maybe a draft of an ordinance, and then we can try to catch more folks when, um.
Yeah.
We have a more full house in January, um, we can kind of present, present a draft form, and then if that looks good, or, and no changes need to be made, then we can proceed.
Well, not only that, I think, once, once you get to the point where you want public hearing, you'd like to have that draft pretty.
Right.
Pretty much in order, so we don't have to deal with it at the public hearing.
Okay, we'll work on that in the meantime and try to get that draft to the January meeting.
Thank you, everybody, for your input.
Thank you. I do stop on the way home to get, uh, uh, my six drummies, though, I do that, for the, for the bowling alley, that's my one. Uh, one vice that I have once a month. No, I get it.
No, bowling alley.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, appreciate the feedback.
Appreciate the input.
Appreciate your input.
This was, uh, this was enlightening. Now, we try to be. Oh.
Maybe in the summer, I don't think, I won't think he'll be by tonight.
I go to my daughter, she's. My daughter's got all kinds of, up, up north here, all right, we'll move on. No, we're fine, that's okay, so we've done, uh, yes, yes. Um, you know what we're gonna do, we got a discussion only to, uh, I'm gonna change this around a little bit, if it's okay with everybody. Is anybody here, I understand. Hans is here, so is anybody else here for any, I don't know, for anything else, o- other than entertainment, okay. Let's go with, oh, he's gonna be next anyway, I'm sorry, item seven B, for discussion only, conceptual review for the plans of proposed mixed use building. Two ten and two twenty Janesville Street applicant is Hans and Nikki Thiel. Why don't you go and tell us what you're gonna do?
All right. All right, I'll give a little bit of background here and then let you guys jump in, so, um, this property here, corner of Janesville and Elm, um. The former K and K lawn and sport for quite a while, a lot, lot of businesses over the years, you know, service station at one point, um. So, Hans and Nikki, uh, purchased the property about two years ago, year and a half or so, um, and. I know they've received inquiries, I have as well, about different users, um, for that space, and none of them are really a great fit for. Down, our kind of downtown core and, and the direction we'd like to see that area head, um. So, a couple of weeks ago, they approached me with an idea to do a, a small mixed use, uh, two-story building down here with some commercial space. And some apartments on the first floor, and then some apartments above, um. In our latest comp plan, we did have a, a slight change to this particular, um, area, um. Do more planned mixed use, so not necessarily in line with all the, the downtown zoning kind of requirements, so. Should this move forward, um, we'll need to just take a look at which zoning district might kind of be the best fit for this, whether it's neighborhood business or. Um, something like that would still accommodate for apartments above and having that commercial space, I think, um. Is important to not lose that opportunity for downtown, but also a way to kind of transition nicely into the residential neighborhood, something that's more of that. Medium, uh, messy middle kind of scale housing, so, um. All of these folks gonna talk about, um, their concept plan, I know we have some example images, maybe what you'd like to aim for as far as materials, ideas and.
Basic, and I guess we wanna look at your direction prior to getting too far ahead of ourselves with it, if there's, you know, anything that jumps out at you. Off the bat.
Yeah, so, go ahead, you wanna talk a little bit about the site and how, how you would kind of lay things out?
So, there's an existing building where the parking stalls, seven, six, and five are essentially right now. That would obviously be gone, bring the building up to the front, we'd have parking. In the back and the sides, and then the building would essentially take up the rest of it, um. Four units on the top, being residential, two on the bottom, and two commercial spaces on the frontage of Janesville Street. This is, like I said, very preliminary before we get too far into it, so. We're just looking for any feedback you guys have on, on any of it.
I like, um, I think it's a good use for this site.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's a, a really nice adaptive reuse of it, um, it's a, also, I like the, the fact. Doctor, um, I think that, uh, your intentions for the landscaping are also well, well placed. I think that you've done a nice job to sort of screen the parking from, um, Main Street, Janesville Street. Um, I would say that you could probably soften up some of the stuff that's in front of the commercial and maybe put it on the neighboring. Between your building and the neighboring property to what I'm gonna call a west.
Yep.
Um, uh, I think that one thing that I, I'm not real comfortable with is. Uh, the, the parking that comes off of Elm Street, it's kind of kiddy, it's wonky, but on the north side.
Weird angle, yeah.
Yeah, the point, um, the, the stall that's the furthest or closest to Elm Street. Um, I think that, uh, I think that because of the angle of it, um, you're backing right out into traffic. I would lose that stall, I would wanna have a little bit more of a throat before you get into traffic. Does that make sense?
Yep, no, I understand, yeah.
Um, I think that, uh, if you wanted to, I don't know how you handle your, your trash enclosures. But an opportunity you might wanna look into is to take the, 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 the area that you've got for your trash enclosure and put it in front of one of the. Stalls, like stall, sorry, I'm old, um. Seven, for instance, I think it is.
Yep.
Um, that would just mean that you would need to schedule your trash pickup for when somebody might not be there, or if you leave that for. Uh, a business use, maybe you could schedule it for.
At night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that would, what I'm trying to do is skinny up the curb cuts on that street.
So it's not big, one big wide.
Yeah, yeah, because that will cause problems, you're gonna find that knucklehead that wants to come in and park.
Yep.
Parallel to the street, and then people that are in those stalls are, yeah, um, and then they're, they'll block the sidewalk. So, I think that I'm just trying to figure out a way to sort of minimize that.
Right, mitigate it.
Um, I, I think that the architecture that you're going with is, is nice, I think it's, it's headed in the right direction. I will make a suggestion that, um, the buildings in the imagery that you've created, the disconnect right now for me is at the top.
Yep.
I think that you need to have like a, what, it's called a cornice, like maybe a two-step cornice where they put two pieces and stack them on top of each other, so that. Um, it kind of creates a, a top to the building.
Gotcha.
Cause right now it looks like a cube.
Yeah, no, and it's just basic, I mean.
Yeah, I think that you've done, and I, the materials will help that.
Right.
Um, you know, based on your imagery, um, but I think that by creating more of a top will help the aesthetic of the building itself.
Yep.
Um, the other thing, and this is just, this is just me, um, the awnings that you've got, um, I think are right. I just think that they're too high, I would bring them down so that you could put them at the top of the windows.
Yep.
Or the transoms above the door, what that would do is allow you more opportunity for signage for your tenants to go on top of that. Cornice, or on top of that, that, um.
You'll get it.
Piece that hangs off there.
Yeah.
Um. Cause I don't, you, you will have tenants that if you leave those, um, canopies, there it is. If you leave those canopies where they're at, they're sort of in mid, they're in no man's land, there's too little area underneath it to put a sign.
Yep.
Um, but there's not.
Not high enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think if you bring it down, it will bring some scale to that entry, and it will create more space above that and the, um. Deck that's above it, or the window that's above it, to put some signage.
Okay.
Um. Yeah.
Great idea.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want anything else that really sticks out, I'll start revising it, I guess.
Yeah, get, take some of the eyes, you know, some of the ideas that John gave you, and it'll make a big difference, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's, I think it's a.
Yep.
Great fit for that site.
Do you guys have any direction on materials, like brick versus? More of what's here on the left, whether that's vinyl or hardy plank, or, um. So that's more of a pitched roof versus the flat roof.
We were kind of looking for probably more, you know, the first floor being masonry.
Okay.
Being, you know, siding of whatever variety.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, something you might, something to consider even is, um, you know, you've got the three sort of cubes.
Yep.
The, the middle one sort of steps back in, um, to create or differentiate some, some difference. Is to take the masonry that's on the part that's pushed in and lower it down, or raise it up from this part that's on the.
Give it a little dimension, yeah.
Yep, um, and you could even, if. What you wanna do for materials, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but that would give you another opportunity if you wanted to do like the stone. On the outside, for instance, and the brick in the middle.
Yeah.
But you don't have to, if you wanna just do the one material, the changing of the heights, I think helps.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yep, thanks for listening to the chicken.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Formative. Are you planning to have chickens?
No.
Oh, okay. Those are fine.
In season, in season, I take it.
All right, thank you, we'll move on to item seven C, review and possible recommendation to the village board, zero lot line. Certified survey map of six hundred and six, uh, six sixty and six sixty-two South Main Street, the applicant is Lawrence Johnson.
Okay, let me get back over there, this is our standard zero lot line CSM for duplex, um. I think I may have had the, the most recent, um, both of these CSMs had a couple of comments, sorry, they're still really loud. And I think this one has also gotten to the point where, um, there's few, if any, kind of outstanding comments from the engineer, but as always, I will. Make sure that they're wrapped up before we get to village board, but, uh, no concerns here on this South Main Street.
Okay.
CSM, pretty, pretty standard.
Okay. Need a motion on recommend, recommend the village board approval of the certified survey map of six sixty and six sixty-two South Main Street contingent upon. A final review by the engineer and village board.
So I'm a second.
We have motion of a second, any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you. Item, uh, seven, uh. Yes, D, review and possible recommendation village board, zero lot line certified survey map, four oh nine and four ten, uh, four eleven. Concord Drive, applicant is Julie Larson.
Yep, same thing here, I know the outstanding comment was about, um, existing building elevations, and I just got that revised, um. CSM from them last night, and that's off to the engineer, so I assume that you will have no further comments.
So, we will have, uh, essentially the same type of a, a motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have one more review by the, by the, uh, engineer, or one correction, so that's gonna be a review. Okay, so we'll need a motion recommended village board approval of the certified survey map. Four oh nine, four eleven Concord Drive contingent upon final review by, um, our village engineer, Rooker Milky.
So moved.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, that is the last of our public, uh, our new business, is there any other new business that we have? Okay, status of, uh, development projects, you wanna take that?
Uh, I did get a list from Lauren today, I don't have to read this all, uh, verbatim, but, um. For private development projects, uh, green view preserve phase two, so, uh, Verde and neighborhood. Uh, utilities and street are substantially complete, building permits for the first houses have been issued this week for that second phase. Um, which is mostly starter drive, um, Highlands and other one, phase four, utilities and street on the, on Denmark Circle, which is just. North of the Villas, um, those are in the punch list phase, raming for utility acceptance on December sixteenth. Um, and then building permits will be available shortly after that acceptance. Peterson Trail portion of phase four will be done in twenty twenty-five, um, and then the flats, uh, those are. On the, as you're coming off, uh, Highway CC onto Peterson Trail, those are on the right, Lake Stone is doing those. Those are the two-story walk-up apartments, I was actually just out there yesterday, um, and it sounds like the first building they're gonna have. Uh, leases start January fifteenth, so they'll have folks in there, uh, a little over a month from now, but all those buildings will be kind of done in sequence, um. The contractor said he thought they'd be offsite by kind of October, November of next year, so. Um, public projects, Keller Alpine and the Rotary Path paving almost completed, there's a little bit, I think that's getting touched up near the library, um. And reseeded in the spring, basketball courts, um. Just wrapping up, um, getting backboards back on there, and striping will happen in the spring. Wolf Works Garage, there was an update for their parking lot that's done, South Main Street is. Wolf Works Garage, there was an update for their parking lot that's done. South Main Street is done. Well Three, um, that's over on Hillcrest and East Netherwood. Um, contract with Fendorf underway, so they are getting the equipment procured, um, finalizing project schedule starting early twenty twenty-five. We mentioned Well Six earlier in the meeting, but bidding is currently open and then bids will be open next Thursday, the twelfth. Um, construction will be kind of march to march, um, coming up this spring. Waste water treatment plant and Richard's Road improvements, um, for that lift station there. Uh, the bid package is posted online. It just got posted the other day, so that'll be open until January eighth. And that is a pretty big project, especially at the wastewater treatment plant. That's about a two-year project. North Oak Street, Phase One, this is our big road project for next year. Um, public information meeting is going to be on the seventeenth of December here at Village Hall. Um, bidding in January for a spring twenty-five construction start date. Um, and I know they've been working closely with the school district, police station, other kind of stakeholders, youth center that are in that corridor to make sure that everybody is aware of the plans and, and trying to minimize impact for, for all those uses.
How much woke are we doing, all the way from Netherwood?
Um, believe it is. Gosh.
There's a couple blocks of, in from, uh, Netherwood, it's already been repaid.
Okay.
I think it's Lin- Lincoln.
Lincoln Street?
Lincoln is the northern, yeah.
There's, it seems a little further, uh, north, but, and then all the way to, uh, Janesville.
To Janesville, yeah.
Oh, really? Boy, it doesn't seem.
Yeah. And then DC Park Phase Two, um, all three contracts, the lighting, kind of underground install, the, um, storage building and then the fields are wrapping substantial completion. And then, um, I don't know if you all had a chance to meet Eric Swatska, he's our new kind of parks, the facilities guy. Um, came from, uh, Bytents, he was there for a couple of years, kind of managing all of their facilities inside and out. So he's, he's been great. He's been here a couple of months now, but he's, um, working with our youth sports groups to get, um, them into the storage shed and get equipment secured in there. So that's the public works update.
Good.
Appreciate the, the bullet point list, yeah. Love going on.
I know it's getting, well, one quick question. I, what happened, and maybe it's not for this meeting, but on, on, uh, Main Street in the north, on the new, for, the next, a quick trip, the new, uh, apartment building.
Apartment.
We ripped up the street.
I think there was some.
Did we go on the street? We didn't go on the street, or did we go on the street?
Yep.
Yeah, what was?
But I'm, I'm sure what.
Yeah, I think there was some, um, utilities they had to connect to in North Main Street. Then there was a repair that was done, because, you know, there was some gravel there for a while, a little bit of a depth and they repaired that patch.
Yeah, but they.
Is that what you were talking about?
I'll, I'll pursue that.
Okay.
I'll wait for this meeting.
Um, I will also mention, last month, we had our, um, consultants from redevelopment resources here sharing their draft of the downtown plan. So I'm expecting the full plan with the whole narrative and other recommendations, uh, a draft next week for, um, internal review and then hoping we'll have that on the January planning commission meeting for review and possible recommendation to the board.
Okay, anybody else, anything? Now, you, everybody see our, our, um, meeting list or the meeting for the next year? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Meyer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.